I'm calling to order the Planning Commission meeting of July 12, 2022. Shall we stand to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We are in the name of our republic, our country, and our liberty and our justice.
Thank you. Commissioner Spear, are you on board? Yes. Commissioner Spear, can you hear us?
Can anyone hear me?
We can hear you well, but I'm afraid -- can you hear us? Can you hear me? Well, Commissioner Spear, I'm going to assume that you can at least hear us, and we'll take it from there. Jorge, if you have any enlightenment, let us know, okay?
Yes, he just dropped out of the meeting again. I'll follow up with him.
Okay. All right. So first item is to review the minutes of May 10. That was the last time we met. I'm sorry. Roll call.
Chair Barbe?
Here.
Commissioner Barber?
Here.
Commissioner Doan is absent. Commissioner McCarroll?
Here.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes, present.
Commissioner Spear is trying to join us. And Commissioner Wyler?
Here.
So first up is to review the minutes of May 10. Are there any comments or concerns from commissioners who are here? I think May 10 was the last time we met. No comments?
I move to approve the minutes of May 10, 2022.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second? I will --
And?
Okay. Commissioner Barber's seconds. And we have approval. Roll call?
Chair Barbe?
Yes.
Approved. Commissioner Barber?
Approve.
Commissioner McCarroll?
Approved.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes, approve.
Commissioner Spear, can you hear us? Commissioner Wyler?
Yes.
Okay. Vote is 5202, approved.
I anticipate we may have some issues come time to vote for Commissioner Spear. So I'm not sure how we'll deal with that.
See if you can participate.
Okay. All right. Written communications.
Good evening, Chair Barbe and Commissioners. There were two pieces of written communication that were placed on the dais, I believe, for everyone. One of -- actually, and they both were emailed to you prior to the meeting, both related to agenda item G1.
Okay. All right. Moving on to public hearings, we only have one this evening, Senate Bill 9 implementing ordinance, PL 22-0363. And I believe, I'm going to provide a presentation.
Yes. Good evening, Chair, Planning Commissioners, Sean Nicholas, Principal Planner. The item before you is Senate Bill 9 implementing ordinance for the city of Escondido. So some important background associated with SB 9. On January 1 of this year, SB 9 went into effect. So at any time between January 1 and now, an applicant should they wanted to could come in and apply for a development consistent with the requirements of SB 9. The city, though, has not received any formal applications to date. We've received a lot of inquiries, but no one has formally submitted any applications. SB 9 primarily did two things. Allows two primary dwelling units on a single-family residential parcel, which we have called the two-family dwellings. And then it also has created what is called the urban lot splits. SB 9 does allow for local jurisdictions to adopt local objective development standards. And this item before you are those requirements that staff, engineering, and the city attorney's office have put together consistent with the SB 9 legislation. And Planning Commission's action tonight will be a recommendation to the city council. So to begin with, let's talk a little bit about SB 9 applicability. As I said, this is for single-family residential uses, and it's the key there is the --
Can anyone hear me?
Hello, Commissioner? Commissioner Spear?
Are you able to hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Commissioner Spear. Are you there? Can you hear us? Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, but I'm afraid -- can you hear us, is the question?
Yeah, I can. The connection's a little garbled, but I can hear you.
Okay.
So as I was saying, it is primarily for single-family residential uses, which for our standard zoning map and applicable to our city zoning code, that would be the RE and R1 zone parcels and their applicable subtypes. And then it would also apply to the zoning districts within our specific area plans that are also any districts or zones that are, again, primarily for R1 use, as the primary use. So it's not permitted in any other zoning districts, even if single-family residential is an allowed use. So that's a very important distinction, because, for example, in our residential agricultural zoning district, residential isn't allowed use, but it is not the primary use. And that is the key distinction there. It's also not permitted in historic districts or on parcels with the historic structure or designation upon it. So it would not apply to the Escondido neighborhood. And there is a number of other limitations set forth in the ordinance that also references the state legislation associated with a variety of things, wetlands, and earthquakes, other types of issues such as that. With that, I want to bring up a slight modification with what we just talked about. We realized today on page 2 of 18 on Exhibit B of your resolution this evening, wanting again to clarify that these are not permitted on any parcel that does not, as a primary use, have single-family residential. You'll see there in bold highlighting under D 2A, that just needs to add the words "as the primary use," and that will make this clear as to how this should apply. It came up because, for example, a residential R1 zone could potentially have some -- an albatross tree or something, and that's a permitted use, but technically that's considered is under the agricultural portion of our zoning code. So we just want to, again, make it clear that where this applies. So the two-family dwellings, objective standards, there's a whole list of them in Exhibit B provided to you. I wanted to highlight kind of a few key ones that we discussed in the staff report. First off is that if a parcel is created or a part of a urban lot split, they are limited to two units. It doesn't matter if it's a primary dwelling unit and an ADU or a JADU. It doesn't matter if it's a two-primary dwelling units. That's it. So just two units are permitted with -- associated with urban lot split projects. We've established a size minimum and a maximum limitation, because the concern there is we want to put a minimum, not wanting to see these become micro-units just squeezed into areas. We felt it would be appropriate to have it be 400 square feet, and that's consistent with a lot of the ADU square footages we're seeing on these projects, on ADU projects. But as it's laid out very extensively, our code does allow for flexibility in the case of larger lots and compliance with the underlying zoning district. And again, that's with the goal of trying to create as much consistency with existing neighborhood as possible. And you will see in there additional requirements regarding parking and so on and so forth. So again, staff should review this, and it is staff's position that all of these requirements are consistent with the SB 9 legislation. We've made it very clear, similar to ADUs, which I just spoke about, the -- there are the opportunity for reduced setbacks up to a minimum, a maximum of four foot away from a property line for an interior side or rear property line, if there's any approach into a setback, into an interior side or rear setback. So for example, if the rear setback is 25 feet and they've set their structure at 20 feet, just for an example, they would be limited to 16 feet in a one-story map. Now, if they meet the underlying zoning district, they can apply the underlying zoning district requirements, but we want to make it clear that if you approach any setbacks for a structure, it's 16 feet in a one-story is the limitation. Lastly, parking requirements. We have required at least one parking space per unit. We have required that to be parking, again, with the goal of consistency with the neighborhood. That is, of course, if there are some exemptions that are built into these legislature, which we -- legislation, which we have incorporated into our code as well, meaning that if there's certain standards that are met, certain two-family dwelling units may not require parking, and that's laid out under your development standards. The second item has to do, again, with the urban lot splits. Again, limits to units, two units per parcel that is involved with a urban lot split. And if they want to do a two-family dwelling unit and utilize those development standards, they would have to be compliant with Section 33-115. It's important to note that no lot smaller than 1,200 square feet can be created. So that means a minimum size of the existing lot has to be 2,400 square feet. And then no new lot. A new lot must be a minimum of 40% of the existing lot. So there's a lot of very interesting requirements in which the legislature has put in here. So let's go over that again. With a urban lot split, the minimum size you can go down to for a lot is 1,200 square feet, which means that the minimum lot size for a parcel would be 2,400 square feet, then split in 50/50. And for example, if you have a 10,000-square-foot lot, you couldn't do 8,000 and 2,000. The minimum you could do, or the maximum you could do is 6,000 and 4,000, for example. So it's a 60/40 split. And again, it's important to note that lots associated with the urban lot split cannot be further subdivided. Any of these requirements associated with SB 9 that we're adopting into our local zoning code is exempt from CEQA pursuant to the SB 9 legislation. And before I get into the recommendation, I just want to highlight in Exhibit B, when finalizing the language, there were a few minor just internal references that will need to be cleaned up, that staff will be doing prior to city council, the item going to city council. And I just want to highlight that it's mainly a reference of subsection D needs to become subsection E, just a few minor administrative clarifications that staff will take care of. But staff does recommend the planning commission adopt Resolution Number 2022-06, including the revisions identified by staff recommending approval of the Senate Bill 9 implementing ordinance to the city council. With that, that does conclude staff's presentation, and staff is available to address any of the commissioners' questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Wonderful. Questions for clarity from the planning commissioners?
For clarity to start with, could you define in more detail urbanized standards? I understand that we're restricting it to urbanized standards.
In terms of implement -- the implementing of SB 9?
Yes.
So I'm not familiar with the term urban center. We're limiting it to the, as I said, the parcels that are primary, that are zoned for primarily single-family residential, which is our RE, R1. So there are parcels all throughout the community that are zoned that, and I'm not aware of that particular term being in here. I apologize. Is there a particular page you're looking at?
This was maybe -- this was when I was reading SB 9.
Okay. Commissioner Barber, if I may. My belief is that this is related to the term of urbanized area.
Yes. I said urbanized center.
Right, right. And that's, I believe, a census data, or census tract information. Everywhere within the city of Escondido is within the urbanized area. So this is applicable anywhere within the city that meets the other requirements and qualifications that Principal Planner Nicholas said.
Thank you. Also, my understanding is that there's also potential to our property owner to apply to having four units as opposed to?
Yes.
Could that possibly occur?
Thank you, Commissioner Barber. So if a individual wants to develop their existing lot and is not looking to just subdivide as part of an urban lot split, a person could, on a single-family lot, put on two primary dwellings, and then each of those primary dwellings would be allowed to have either an ADU or a JADU for a total of four units. But it would not then be involved with an urban lot split.
And I understand that SB 9 exempts onsite parking for an approved second dwelling unit if the proposed project is within a half a mile from a major transit area or a fixed bus route?
I would say that's definitely true, yes. And that's reflected in here.
Would it be possible for staff to still require that in their administrative approval, to require onsite parking even if they are within a half mile from a major transit corridor or a fixed bus route?
I absolutely understand your concern, Commissioner, but unfortunately, based on state law, we have to allow them to be exempted if they meet that requirement.
The four-foot setbacks seems awful narrow to me when I live in a house whose hallways are wider than four feet. Do we have the authority, the latitude, to require greater than four-foot setbacks on these properties?
For interior side yards and rear setbacks, no. For street-facing setbacks, in terms of like a street-side setback, which is typically, I believe in our R1 zones, is 10 feet. And then for our typical front yard setback, which is 20 feet, those have to be met. I would say that we have, we being staff, have tried to, I would say, incentivize, meaning the underlying zoning, again, by providing opportunities for larger units, provides up to parking onsite as well as a greater height potentially by meeting the underlying zoning district. So while we have to allow that encroachment up to those interior and rear yard setbacks, as I said, we're trying to give them benefits if they meet the underlying zoning more consistent with the surrounding neighborhood.
And finally, I'm aware that 240 cities petitioned the governor to veto SB 9. Was the city of Escondido one of the 240?
I don't know. I don't --
I don't believe so, no. And I don't know that that's because we, because our council decided they did not want to. I don't think it had anything to do with that. I think it was just the timing and the awareness of what needed to be done ahead of that.
Prior to staff investigating and developing this article, did city council provide any input in what direction they wanted staff to pursue?
They did not.
There are two lawsuits currently filed to try to block SB 9. Caesar Redondo Beach, Carson, Torrance, and Whittier, as charter cities file lawsuits, and also policies variously liquid as charter cities. Could the city of Escondido, if the city council was opposed to implementing this type of land use policy, could we participate in the lawsuit?
I'm not familiar with the lawsuits and whether we could participate as a party to the court lawsuits. It always takes a go actually to assert rights of the city council, once it's to assert. That being said, SB 9 is the law of the land right now, and we must follow that law, absent in some other direction. Just filing a lawsuit would not change that. Anybody could walk in today with an application, and we have a ministerial duty to follow the law, and duck the eyes across the table. What staff is trying to do is within the four corners of the law, carve out ways where we can manage it as best we can, given today's law.
Being a good attorney, you already answered my follow-up question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, Commissioner. Thank you.
And I'd just like to ask everyone to speak very clearly into the mic so Commissioner Spear can hear, and also for the record, because apparently there've been audio issues over time. Sean, your presentation was very clear.
Oh.
Other questions for clarity and/or discussion?
I have lots of them.
Okay, great.
Do you have a last?
No, it's okay. Maybe you'll cover it for other people.
Okay.
There, we'll put that in there.
So Sean, you already mentioned about four houses on one lot. Is that reflected in this order in some place?
I didn't see that either.
I think I remember one thing and saying, oh, I wonder if this means four houses on one lot, but it wasn't really.
Let me find it for you. Give me one second.
In the ordinance itself?
Yeah.
Oh, page 8 of 18, the very end of 115. "Inclusive of the two-family dwelling requirements described in this section, any existing parcel may be permitted to construct up to four total units."
Yes, seven feet.
Okay.
And again, as you said, Commissioner Paul, that's the existing unit, so they're not create -- a lot is not created or the parcel's not involved with in the urban lot split. It is just the primary existing unit developing, is developing these extra units.
Right, right, right. Okay. And then I sent you an email asking if you could provide some general comments about where the units would and would not be allowed. Were you able to do that?
So myself and city planner Finesse tried to develop a way in which to determine that. Unfortunately, the variables, the fact that there's many single-family residences in zones that aren't R1 or RE, makes it very difficult to try to lock down and be able to spatially say it's here, here, and here would be where it's allowed. It's just, it's difficult to -- we can bring up a zoning map and show the R1 and RE zoning districts, but short of that, there's nothing really that I can point you to to define in how many parcels that is.
Okay.
I would just like to add to that, that, you know, when I -- you know, you look across the city, I think another thing that's going to is the placement of the existing home on a lot is going to, you know, limit how many lots can take, can make use of this without tearing down that existing home. And same with topography and grading that, and utilities that might play in. So it is, it's going to be, it would be a very tough, you know, determination of how many we really think could, could make use of it.
And as Assistant City Engineer Tunnel indicated, if a home has been lived in or occupied, rented for within the last three years, you're very limited to the amount of demolition you can do. So that will also potentially, getting onsite access as you're required to have may become difficult for a lot of parcels to -- while you can do it, there's a difference between can and physically being able to develop something. Those are two very different things. So I think that is something that will come into play more so than even which parcels just are allowed to or not allowed. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that was part of my question to staff, too, was can you give us a layout of a house on a lot and say, because this house is here or it's so big, you can or cannot now build another one? That was part of my ask. I know it was a huge ask. But to your point, that was one of my further questions. That was one of my further questions was that I saw a comment about you can't do this if there's been a tenant within three years. And what's the logic behind that?
So what the issue there with the three years is you can't demolish a structure if it has been rented or occupied within the last three years. So you can still, for example, on an existing parcel, if you can physically be able then to develop a second unit, or through an urban lot split and meet all the requirements, you can then move on with the project applicable to these requirements. You just cannot, there are limitations to the amount of demolition that you can do. I believe it's 25%.
Right. So my question is, why? What would be the reasoning behind that?
That was, it's verbatim from state law, for whatever reason. SB 9, the state legislature, they chose those numbers and they're --
So that's part of SB 9?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I was going to ask also about the historic designations. That's part of SB 9?
Yes, sir.
All right. So then, on the first page C, we talked about major plot plan, and I saw the application for a plot plan. But I do see you say "major." Is there an expectation in the future that there will be different types of plot plan applications?
It's -- major just refers to the type in terms of our FE code. Primarily distinguished between, is it a minor or a major? They're both administrative approvals, but it just references to a particular line item in our FE schedule.
If I could -- So the application is the same?
If I could clarify that. The zoning code has different provisions that designate which, which projects would be requiring a minor versus a major conditional, I'm sorry, plot plan. The intent is that, well, the process is pretty similar. It's just, and the application materials are pretty much the same. It's just the --
I like that one, myself.
-- project that winds up triggering that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll pay you back later. Okay.
So, and I have some questions related to the term adjacent and so on.
Can you get change for that, two fives? The desk, front desk.
Commissioner Spear, are you on the line? Jorge? No.
Are you able to hear me at all?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Pretty bad connection, but I'm catching bits and pieces here.
Okay. So we were just hearing from Commissioner Paul regarding his questions and discussion of various aspects of the ordinance.
Sorry, what was that?
That's all right. We are just having a discussion about different aspects of the ordinance that we're reviewing as a part of this public hearing. And Commissioner Paul has the floor at the moment.
Thank you.
So notwithstanding the foregoing, an application shall not be subjected solely because it proposes adjacent or connected structures. So you used the word adjacent in a few places. Could you give me a definition for that word?
So I believe in the section, which is, that has to do with, in terms of why we cannot deny a project? Is that what you're reading from, I believe, up here?
Well, I'm on the, first page is the first place that I see the use of the word adjacent. At the very bottom, notwithstanding the, notwithstanding the foregoing, an application shall not be rejected solely because it proposes adjacent or connected structures, provided that the structures meet building code safety standards.
So in this context, it would mean a, two structures that are closer than the required building separation. So for example, if they're one-story structures, our code allows for a five-foot building separation. And then if it's two stories or more, then it's a 10-foot building separation. And so that's what that would mean, is just because a, the site is connected or doesn't meet that, in essence, that requirement, that that's not a reason, as long as it meets fire safety requirements.
So the term adjacent means within five or 10 feet respectful?
Within, for that context, yes.
So next page, location B on properties described in subparagraph B to K inclusive of paragraph six of subdivision A of Government Code, Section 65913.4. Is that a standard clause in other places?
So this is, again, a direct reference to SB 9, and what that has to do with is, that's a section of the code that is actually also associated with SB 35. They use the same language in terms of the types of properties that wouldn't be allowed to take advantage of these development standards. One of them is, for example, the historic district. One of them is wetlands or sign of sensitive habitat, or if it has some kind of deed restriction for affordable housing, things of that nature. It's just a layout in talking with the city attorneys. in talking with the city attorneys. We felt that, that it would be more appropriate to just reference the section in case those get updated and become more restrictive. It would automatically apply without having to update our code.
Okay, gotcha. So all these A through F are straight from SB nine?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So then, page three E, now we get to your E, that was labeled D. E1B, except as described below, no new unit constructed. So, new unit constructed, I guess I'm confused about what does that mean, no new unit? Is that always the second unit? Is that both units if you're demolishing and building two from scratch?
It may, yeah. It could be, or it could be a vacant parcel, and a vacant parcel is looking to develop on it. So it would be any new construction associated with that, whether it's just adding one to a lot with an existing primary like you suggested. The maximum is 800 square feet. But again, we've provided various opportunities for larger than that if they meet certain requirements.
But it wouldn't, wouldn't, there wouldn't be that kind of restriction to build the first house, to tear down a house and build one. But if you're gonna tear down a house and build two, they both have to be less than 800 square?
If you're going to use the provisions of 33-115, any new units created through that, the limitation is 800 square feet or as described below. If it's just a single-family residence developed on a single-family residential parcel, it'll just be whatever the requirements are of the underlying zoning code. But, you know, they won't be allowed to encroach into setbacks. They'll be able to go higher than that. So they wouldn't be as restricted as obviously is taking advantage of this, because they're just developing consistent with the primary use of the site.
So I could, I could redevelop and put two units, one of which met all the requirements and was 2,400 square feet?
And then if you did that and then wanted to come back and be like, I would now want to do this, 33-115, then yes, then the second unit would be limited to 800 square feet.
But I'd have to do that in two transactions?
Yes, that would be the way to do that. Similarly, and we deal with this actually quite often in ADUs in the same way, and the way the ADU law is set up, that it's a multiple transactional situation, but
You can't build an ADU at the same time you build the primary?
You can, but like for multifamily is when it really comes into play. It's a long story. But I'm just telling you is that this isn't uncommon in the way that the state legislature sets up these types of requirements.
Okay. And then further on, we can build a 1,200 square foot, but we have to provide two, two covered parking spaces now, not just one covered parking space.
And they have to meet the underlying development standards in terms of setbacks and all of those other, and building separations, all of those. So there's a whole list of those requirements. And one of them would be to provide two covered parking spaces.
And cannot exceed 450 square feet?
Yes. So that comes from actually, we've seen a lot of with these ADU developments, that all of a sudden, we'll say very large, broad structures are being proposed secondarily and claiming to be accessory structures, though they're twice the size of the ADU that they're supposed to be associated with. And so in trying to, again, keep these structures proportionally to each other, staff felt that that would be an appropriate development standard, again with the goal of trying to keep consistency with the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay. And then the top of page five, section C, any future subdivision of a parcel with a two-family dwelling project shall not cause the parcel to be out of compliance with the provisions of this subsection. What possible future subdivision could there be?
Yes. So what this talks about is, for example, you have an existing lot, and you decide you want to take advantage of 33-115. And you build your extra unit with your other units. You have two primary dwelling units. And then you decide, because you have the ability to, in terms of lot area, you want to then take advantage of an urban lots split. So it means that you can't set up your subdivision in such a way that you're gonna create a non-conforming condition with the existing development. You have to make sure that the lot lines are in a way, such a way that it will make sure that everything, both new and old, is compliant with the provisions of this code. I will tell you, though, that's pretty similar to any subdivision with existing units, that if, just think of like a standard subdivision of a five-acre parcel, they're doing five one-acre parcels and they have a, we wouldn't approve anything that doesn't meet, you know, that would create a non-conforming situation. So it's the same, it's saying in essence the same thing.
Okay. All right. And then further down on that page, two E, detached dwelling units and associated covered parking shall be a minimum of 10 feet from each other unless, oh, that's, I'm sorry, you already explained that one. A little bit further down, three, maximum heights and stories. If located within the rear or side yard of the underlying zoning district, the two-family dwellings shall be limited to 16 feet in one story. Do you mean to say if located within the rear or side yard setback?
Yes. I, we could definitely add setback if you feel that that would be clear, but that is the intent by the rear and side yards.
I'm sorry, either
It is appropriate to add setback. And there will make that revision if that's something that the commission would like to put into any motion to, is there?
That is the intent, is that it's the setback.
Well, okay.
So we could, we could make that recommendation.
No, they're saying it needs to say setback. I mean, you can have, you can have a 50-foot rear yard, and this says if it's located in the rear yard, it can only be 16 feet on one story. So I think they mean the setback. And on the next page, six, parking requirements. At least one new off-street parking space shall be provided for each new unit. That sounds like if you already have six parking spaces, you still need another one.
It would depend on where they're located, right? Because I think we have other requirements here about that they need to be adjacent to the dwelling unit they meet, that they can't be in tandem. I would tell you that if it's all on one parcel, so meaning that it's not associated with a subdivision, so whatever the parking for the units are all on one parcel, is there a scenario that if there's six parking spaces already and it meets the requirement uncovered, would that potentially count towards the new unit? It could. And we have done that, and I've seen that with multiple developments. But we have to look at this in terms of the situation that if it doesn't have it, we want to make sure we get something.
Well, right. But I think there's other requirements that say you have to have a parking, parking per, per the unit. So this one says at least one new space shall be provided. In other places, it already says you have to have enough, you have to have either one parking space or two parking spaces, depending on how big the dwelling unit is.
Just to be consistent.
Yeah.
And the next one is, is that adjacent, B, the required parking shall be located adjacent to the two-family dwelling and parking, it, parking, the parking is associated with. And that's the other place where adjacent was, and I'm asking about what's the definition of adjacent. So that's five or 10 feet away from the house?
I would say that that was, again, that would be the objective yes, is that within five to 10 feet of the, of the unit in which it serves, talking about item B, that's definitely something that I see the confusion and might be good to clarify, that exact linear feet in which it has to be within proximity of the dwelling, the parking space has to be in proximity of the dwelling unit. In terms of what you were saying, in terms of A, at least one new, I see what you're saying about how it has to be a new parking space, you can't. What I would say is this, trying not to rewrite code at the dais, I would say if commission wants staff to go through and make it that if there's parking available on-site and meets the other development standards, that it could be counted towards the required parking for the two-family, or the new two-family dwelling unit created. And we can clarify that if that's the, if that's the intent of the planning commission.
Well, these are all residential lots, so when you talk about adjacent to the lot, to how, to the dwelling unit, I don't know how it's not adjacent to the dwelling unit if it's on, if it's on-site either.
I will tell you that some of the requests, the preliminary requests we've got has, on some of these lots have put like a broad or just parking spaces in front of the front unit, and then 50 to 60 feet away is the entrance to the back unit. And we wanted to avoid, especially if it's, think about someone with their groceries, or it's raining, having to walk all the way the 50, 60 feet from their parking space. We wanted to avoid that. And we were seeing some of that design in some of the preliminary, you know, concepts we were getting from applicants, potential applicants in the community. So it was with that in mind, trying to make sure that the parking was more associated with the dwelling unit that it served. That's what we were trying to accomplish.
So, so from a personal point of view, I don't really think the city should dictate when people have covered parking or not. But that's not a hill I'm planning to die on. So I just always go down to the minority there and ignore that. But I don't think parking spaces need to be covered, per se. Maybe that's the view there. Okay. Driveways that provide access to two homes shall have a minimum paved width of 20 feet. Is that part of like the fire code or something?
I believe that's taken directly from our, our design standards. And I believe probably Assistant City Engineer Tunnel can speak to any of those types of driveway and access-related questions better than I.
What particular, what section were you looking at?
So I'm on page six, access and easements, vehicle, vehicular access, and then I, driveways that provide access to two homes shall have a minimum paved width of 12 feet. And it goes on to say unless it's one-way and you've got two of them, it's 12 feet.
Yeah. Yeah, that's from our design standards currently. And I believe it's also fire code that's dictating that.
Thank you. All right. Next page, seven, each unit in the two-family dwelling shall be placed on a permanent foundation and permanently connected to a public sewer system and on-site wastewater treatment system approved by the County San Diego Health Department. So that means no tiny homes, right?
Say that again, I'm apologizing.
Does that mean no, no tiny houses?
Currently, right now, in the city of Escondido, in terms of the definition of tiny house is not permitted anyways because of our adoption of the California Building Code. The provisions were not adopted by the city, so we currently do not allow them in any
Is that the purpose for item seven?
No, it's just in terms of that they have to have sewer, they need to connect or have a compliant wastewater. That was not the intended purpose regarding tiny homes, I believe.
So the, I can speak to, to an extent to the issue with regard to putting someone on a permanent foundation and tying it into sewer. That's a fairly standard requirement in a lot of jurisdictions as far as constructing single-family homes. A lot of times you'll see people who, a lot of times you'll see people who are looking at putting a modular or manufactured home on a property. And that's when, that's the reason that this kind of language was initially brought into many zoning codes, so that they don't bring it in, leave it on wheels, or put it on stilts and let it be, that it really is, it really is put on the ground and made to be a permanent home.
Okay. So it would preclude the tiny houses, but also a trailer that was not put on the foundation?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. And then the last one there, nine, I'm a little confused about. Both units in a two-family dwelling shall share the same water and sewer utility connections and meter or meters, and shall be subject to connection fees or capacity charges or both. So if it's on the same meter, it shares the meter, it wouldn't have meters. So I'm not sure what the intent there is. I have two houses, but I have only one water meter?
I think it has to do with, and Mr. Tunnel might, might correct me, but I think it refers to the fact that it's water and sewer utility connections. Well, I guess, yeah, I see what you're saying. So it would probably just be meters, because we don't have one for sewer. So it's, would be, share the same water and sewer utility connections and meter, because you don't have a meter for sewer.
So it is two houses with one water meter?
I believe that's the
Yeah, I think the intent is, yeah, I mean, it, currently utilities requires that, that multiple units on a single lot share a single sewer connection and meter, service lateral. They can sub-meter if they like, but that's, that would be beyond our meter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then there's the 25%. But you said that's in, the 25% demolition is part of SB nine?
Yes, sir.
Page nine, D3, parcels adjacent to those which the owner or someone acting in concert, concert with the owner has previously subdivided through an urban lots split process. So those are, urban lots splits are not permitted on the following parcels. Parcels adjacent to those that somebody I know subdivided.
So what that's saying is, if I understand your question, is that if you own two parcels, two one-acre parcels, first E's, next to each other, and the right one, we'll call it parcel A, you want to do an urban lots split and build two homes on each, you couldn't change, you couldn't subdivide parcel B because you have them next to each other. You could do the homes, you could do 33-115, but you just couldn't subdivide. You couldn't take advantage of a second, of another lots split adjacent to that parcel.
Because I own them both.
Because you own them both.
That sounds kind of arbitrary.
That language is specifically, that comes from statute.
Yeah. I printed it out, just in case we needed to. But yes, that is actually directed from SB nine.
Yeah, and it's been placed in the MAP Act, too.
Wow. We try to make some fun stuff up, and we couldn't even get there.
Okay. And then there's one more that I couldn't find, but maybe this is your D and E thing, too. Five parcels containing more than two units, as that term is described in subsection 1315D7A. Is that another one of the sections you have to renumber?
I am so sorry, parcels
It is, it should be F7A. It's the, it's the reference to the accessory dwelling unit section.
Okay, great. And then the next page, 10, at the very top, setbacks, unit size and parking requirements shall be the same as those in sections 33-115C. And I wrote, this section does not seem to apply.
And that's one of the ones I mentioned that will be changed to letter the E, as part of the minor, just clean up some internal references to make sure they're internally consistent.
Okay. And then I, below that, an application for an urban lots split shall not be rejected solely because it proposes adjacent or connected structures, provided that the structures meet building code safety standards are sufficient. So this is the same as in 115, I guess?
Yes.
Thank you very much for indulging.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Paul.
Commissioner Wyler, I see Post-its.
Well, Commissioner Paul, thank you so much for going through all of that, because you captured a whole bunch of what I also did. Mr. Nicholas, I think you did a fine job on this. I agree with the city attorney that pursuant to Commissioner Barber's comments about whether or not, you know, we do this or not, and if we file a lawsuit, you know, are we gonna put ourselves in a precarious position? And yeah, I think so. So I think this helps us out, at least in their interim, until these lawsuits kind of play out. But at least it puts clarification and a certain amount of restrictions on what people can do here to hopefully not can do here to hopefully not impact the neighborhood any more than what it potentially could if we didn't have these. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The questions I've got, and one, and I, and I really kind of know the answer, but you can't sell one of these units off, so it stays with the land. The only way that you'd be able to actually sell the unit is through some type of condominium-type permit, airspace condominium-type permit, and would that be allowed? So you, you're creating this mini plan unit development, or whatever you want to call it. Is that possible through the MAP Act? It's a curiosity question. It doesn't move the needle here tonight, but it's, I'm curious.
I think that's something that staff would have to do a little bit of research and get back to you on.
It's all right. It, I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't, I just don't think it was addressed in SB nine, but whether it, if it's something that SB nine conflicts with, I don't know if we would have...
And, and that's all right. Moving on to page three of 18, capital E, there was a reference to a chapter 12.75. What, what's that referring to? And, and I'm sorry I didn't take the time to look it up myself.
It's directly from SB nine. It's some kind of reference to government code.
Does that have something to do with some deed restriction on affordable housing?
I believe it does.
Okay. That's fine. On page six, under item four at the top, under parking requirements, item B, and Commissioner Paul had, had discussed this, and is required, parking shall be adjacent. Can we put, because we're supposed to be an objective, have objective standards, can we put a number? I don't care. Five, 10, 15? To me, 15 seems appropriate. 25 might be appropriate, but, you know, and maybe this is part of the discussion that commission has after this, but to be objective, it seems like a specific number should be, would be appropriate. And we can kind of hold that for discussion afterward. And, and it's the same thing under, on the same page, under capital D and down at double I, says, you know, if, if there's essentially a car-share vehicle located within one block of the two-family dwelling. I, I know, we're...
Legislature on that one.
What's that?
It's directly from, directly from state legislation.
And it's actually, it's funny, it's...
See, and there you go.
Both of the, under ADUs, right, under the 2020 ADU requirements, so...
So, look, I deal with, with a lot of clients, and they're like, well, I'm within a block.
Yeah.
Well, not really, you know? And if you have a specific number, hey, you know what? You're not within 150 feet. I'm sorry, that's just the way it is.
As I was mentioning to Commissioner Paul, I mean, I feel the legislature likes to just kind of repeat some of these standards that you'll see over and over again.
All right. I got it. Yeah, that was taken care of. Back on, or on page seven, and this goes also to, to something that Commissioner Paul brought up. Item seven on there, where we have to be on a permanent foundation, and this is more for clarification. So a manufactured home could be brought in and placed on, I don't know, a slab, but it could also be placed on a raised foundation consisting of a block wall, that type of thing? Is that considered a permanent foundation?
It is, yeah. The intent is that it's not sitting, sitting on stilts or tires.
Yeah, wheels or weird piers or something like that. Now, wouldn't that kind of apply to a tiny home as well?
Tiny homes are, are, we've adopted the California Building Code, which has certain regulations that apply to tiny homes, and they do not wind up meeting requirements within the building code to be allowed here. I don't know all the details on that. I don't know if, if anyone has looked into that any further, but it, it, there's something more to it than just putting on permanent foundation.
Because I will tell you, as I mentioned earlier, is that having dealt with this tiny home issue earlier, actually in my time here at Escondido, it has not been adopted. Those requirements in the CVC for tiny homes have not been adopted by the city of Escondido. It would have had to be adopted at the time with the 2019 code, and for whatever reason the city did not. So we do not allow tiny homes here in the city of Escondido at this time.
So it's a building code issue?
Building code issue.
Got it. On page eight, at the very top, item number two. So we have a term to be rented for not longer, or it has to be rented for longer than 30 days. Do we have the ability to increase that timeframe? Or is that pursuant to state law?
State law.
All right.
I would venture to guess, and this would be something that the attorney's office may be able to opine on, but I would venture to guess that it could be longer, it just couldn't be shorter. The intent is to not allow short-term vacation rentals.
Okay. And maybe we can have a discussion on that one as well. On page nine, and again, this was brought up by Commissioner Paul, under lowercase D, item three, where you kind of, you, you can't do these subsequent parcel splits. Is there a, in the MAP Act, is there a timeframe upon which you could do a lot split? Let's say somebody did an urban lot split, properties change hands a couple of three times, and we're 10 years down the road? Could that new property owner then do it? Or is this in, this is in perpetuity? And, and it may fall into the MAP Act, and I'm not entirely sure. Because I know that you can't do these subsequent parcel maps.
I will tell you the way that SB nine is written, it's silent on that issue. I think that's a great example. It just references if it's in concert or the same owner with it. But in terms of if they sell it and it's a completely different owner, would they be able to potentially take advantage of that? Again, they would have to be able to meet the requirements if it's a different owner potentially. I think that that's reasonable to assume because it's a different owner, but it doesn't explicitly say in the SB nine. So I think it would be, if it's a totally different entity, if it was, for example, Commissioner Wyler and Commissioner McCarron, I apologize, I just totally butchered your last name, but if you guys were separate owners next to each other, you could take advantage of SB nine, and she could take advantage of SB nine as well.
Okay. Okay. Actually, that, that really clarifies a lot for me. Thank you. On the same page, under lowercase E, item one, says here, no dedication or right-of-way or construction of off-site improvements shall be required. Is there a reason why they wouldn't be required to do front-end improvements if that's a normal part of...
Unfortunately, it would be normally required, but SB nine specifically calls out a exemption to not requiring them to do so. Now, it's important to note that we can require easements up to the full width of the right-of-way, so we will have that ability if in time something changes, a greater figure development comes through, or the city has funds, that we'll have access to that right-of-way. But pursuant to SB nine legislation, we can't require them to do it.
It, it's truly a money thing to promote more housing.
Yeah.
Got it. On page 10, item M, is there a reason why we couldn't put this provision in 33115?
I don't believe that there is a reason, but really it's, it's, an affidavit is very, very difficult to enforce, and in three years, you know, it, it might not be worth our effort to chase that, I think.
No, and I, and, and I understand. And the reason I bring it up is because this was one of the things, a few years back, when the accessory dwelling unit ordinance came up, and, and we had formed a subcommittee and talked about, hey, let's make a requirement, and owners got to live in one of the units. And it was really to promote the intent, which is, you know, having your family next to you, or, or at least to prevent a, a series of developers going out and just doing this all over, and it just becomes a bunch of rentals. And that's why I asked. So we have it here for the urban lot split, but we don't have it on the other side for just the second unit. If, and it seems if it's allowed here in the, in the lot split pursuant to SB nine, that we could also put it over in 115.
I believe that actually there, there are two different components. The components associated with the two-family dwellings, which you'd like to apply it to, is under section 65, 65852.21. And then the, the legislation that derives the urban lot split component is actually a totally different number, it's 66411.7. So the limitations that you see here associated with that are under the urban lot split components, not the two-family dwelling components. So technically, that requirement is specifically associated with the urban lot splits, not the two-family dwellings. While I understand it completely personally, and I professionally agree with you, unfortunately, we don't, I do not believe we have the opportunity to...
All right. Well, thank you.
Yes.
I had the same question on a, on another item, and it's probably a similar answer, so that's okay. That got answered. Mr. Nicholas, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Wyler. Any additional questions for clarity before we get to discussion?
Sean?
Just in general, approximately how many inquiries have you received so far?
I can tell you that we have a interested parties email list. I think it's about a page and a half, two pages long. We have one of our development, part-time development tech is in charge of creating that list. I know it's extensive, and I know that people call regularly to check on the status of that. So I would say there's a number of people in the wing waiting to see the results of this meeting and subsequently city council. But as I said, they could have moved forward, but they have decided to wait to, for these standards to, to be compliant with them.
And that's why my curiosity, eventually there's going to be a cumulative, I'm sorry. There's going to be a cumulative impact from, as it progresses down the pipeline. Is staff going to be applying appropriate developer fees or impact fees to offset impacts to schools and public infrastructure?
Yes. So as a component of this, as we mentioned, as Commissioner Paul mentioned, that it's going to require a major plot plan, which requires a fee, but the development itself, if, if and when approved and goes to building and is ready to be issued, they are subject to development impact fees.
Other? Commissioner Wyler?
Actually, I had one more. We had, we had gotten a couple of written comments, and, you know, based on the questions and the answers here, a lot of them got answered. But the one from the Escondido Chamber of Citizens, they listed seven items that are of concern, and of course, it's a concern of all of us, that SB nine may not be looking at all of these other, other impacts. Are we in a position truly that, look, SB nine is the law of the land, we have to deal with, with it, and the rest of this does not come into play? And, and one of the specific items, and I meant to ask it when Commissioner Paul was talking about it, but it comes into play, if we've got one water meter, and you've got four, four units, and one lateral for sewer, is there analysis, is there an analysis, or at least the ability for the city to say, look, you don't have enough water pressure to provide water to these four homes? And you've got four homes, X number of square feet, all of a sudden, this four-inch line may no longer be big enough to handle the sewer for all these homes?
So I think it's important to note that, you know, the California Building Code, which includes the plumbing code, fire safety, all of these issues, they still are subject to all of that. So all of those typ- things are typical, typically have to be shown to be consistent with the base requirements of those state requirements.
Got it. Thank you. And then, again, back on, on this memo, it's, folks, we, we just have to deal with it as a city regardless of some of these potential impacts.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, Commissioner Wyler. Commissioner Spear, do you have, can you hear us, and do you have any questions or comments about the ordinance itself?
Still too garbled to...
Commissioner Spear, we heard you, but I'm not quite sure what you said. I heard your voice.
Sorry.
Okay. So I'll, I'll proceed unless I hear otherwise with discussion.
I'm sorry, I had one other question.
Okay.
About public input. Have we asked the public for any input going into this at all?
There was a public notice that was published in the paper associated with this, and we have not, other than the letters that you've received at the time of writing the report, we had not received any of these, but we did receive the email and the letter, and that's the only public input we've received.
Okay. So, I mean, the, the notice was about the hearing?
Yes.
I mean, have we noticed the city about, we were going to create this kind of standard at a workshop, or any other way to gauge...
No, just through the development, just the required public hearing for, as required in the Zone Code.
Thanks.
Okay. And finally, my questions, and have actually been addressed through all of these great comments and questions so far. I did want to ask, though, just in terms of the potential for increased vulnerability for, you know, the, if some of these are, is it R1 and, is it R1?
Yes.
Around the jurisdiction are vulnerable to wildfire and increasing the population, et cetera, has this, has this been taken into account at all? I think that was one of the comments in the response from the public.
And this is something actually that staff explicitly looked into, but the way, again, the state legislature is written...
Mm-hmm.
...and the limitations, as long as, as we mentioned earlier, all of the fire safety requirements are met pursuant to the California Building Code and the applicable provisions of it associated with fire safety, it's considered to be compliant and able to go into those higher, very high severity fire zones, consistent, obviously, with all the other development standards and access requirements.
Right. Okay. All right. Discussion.
Through the chair, if we would want to entertain a discussion on the two items that I brought up, one is regarding the distance for the, the parking, and then the other one regarding the term of a rental, and increase in that term from 30 days to something more. If, my feeling is, is we, we probably should have a definitive distance between the building or the unit and the parking, and then also, my feeling is, we should increase that 30 days, just so that we're getting really permanent-type housing for, for people, as opposed to some sort of, you know, rotating 30-day sort of, you want to call it a, a long-term Airbnb or something like that. I'd like to see something where somebody that's going to live in that second unit should be there for an extended period of time beyond 30 days, if we're allowed to do that pursuant to all the other state regulations.
And, excuse me, and I think one more thing on that list would be, do they need a new parking spot? Or do they just have to have enough parking spaces?
Well, yeah, exactly. So those are the, the three things.
Unless there's something else.
I would support Commissioner Paul about the covered parking. You have a friend over here, I don't know if the rest of you can see me.
Okay. So discussion, questions about the, these three items that we would actually put into a motion to include and, and ask for revisions?
If I may add one, one point, I think the issue with increasing the 30 days is something that we need a little legal analysis, that we shouldn't do on the dais, perhaps. You could recommend that we do that legal analysis... You could recommend that we do that legal analysis prior to the city council and report out at the city council hearing.
And, and yeah, I'd support that, that if, if staff and legal counsel could take a look at that, and then at least put that into the staff report or the presentation to city council, that if commission agrees, that, that that timeframe should be extended beyond thirty days, and maybe that's our discussion, what would we recommend as far as a timeframe?
Right, because I, I'm not in favor of that. I, I mean, the thirty days comes from a month-to-month tenancy, whether a tenant has a lease for six months, a year, however long, or whether their tenancy is month-to-month, that's where the thirty days comes from.
Well, you bring up a real good point that I didn't think about. You know, I, I'm looking at it more from the Airbnb side, you're looking at it from more from a month-to-month tenancy, which, which quite frankly, does make a lot of sense. So with that said, I kind of retract where I would like staff to go, because actually, I do agree with Commissioner Paul, that we don't want to eliminate the ability of a month-to-month lease.
And that's an economic incentive as well. All right, so we're down, we're back to two then, the distance for parking, i.e., clarifying the term adjacent and actually putting a number on that. That would be one, and then the other is to require a new parking space versus simply analysis to see whether or not they actually need one, right? Are there any concerns or questions about those?
I support that.
Well, right, so from a, a distance point of view, I really believe that if the parking is on-site, then that's, that's close enough.
When I actually, I actually think that, that setting some sort of minimum would be wise, when I just think of the comments you made, Sean, around just access, and, and I think of elderly folks and having a hard time getting to their unit if they're actually in the, if it is technically, or whatever, granny flat, and you've got elderly folks who are still defending for themselves, and they might just need to have parking closer.
I mean, you, you bring up a, a great example, the granny flat in the back, and there's always, the parking is always in the front, it's, it's never adjacent to the granny flat.
Any thoughts, any other thoughts on that?
I'm really not opposed to having a parking spot farther away from the house. I've worked on many projects where having parking space right in front of the door would inhibit a unit being able to be built, and we have a housing problem. So I am completely understanding that. Offering parking is definitely a San Diego, Southern California thing, and we could probably benefit with getting rid of some parking requirements across the board. I don't think it should be of merit.
Commissioner Wyler?
The reason this came up is just the term adjacent, and so, and I'm thinking, all right, well, let's be objective, you know, provide an objective standard that says X number of feet. However, based on hearing what some of the other commissioners are saying here, maybe we don't say adjacent, we just say on the lot.
Right, there's a minimum requirement for parking, period, not where it is, or how close it is, or whether, even whether it's covered.
But do we, do, but it has to be on the lot as opposed to on the street?
Right, right.
That seems fine.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
On-site.
So instead of adjacent, we say on-site?
On-site.
Yes.
I'm clear.
I think we do have some agreement here.
Through the chair, if I may, before we, before you make a motion or get into that end of vote, there was the public comment that was submitted, it was provided in writing, but it was also submitted through the city clerk's portal, so we do need to read that into the record. So our minutes clerk will do that momentarily. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that unfortunately Commissioner Spear is not available to join us, but he did reach out to myself and Mr. Nicholas earlier and had some concerns regarding encroachments into setbacks. Specifically, it is section thirty-three, one oh four C, I believe, or at least thirty-three, one oh four, which is part of the zoning code that allows certain encroachments into side and rear yard setbacks. The way that the ordinance is written, as we presented it, it allows those encroachments into the lesser, you know, into the four-foot setback, so hypothetically, it would allow at least one more foot into that setback. The idea that, that Commissioner Spear had mentioned to me is the, is the potential of not allowing that additional encroachment since they're already up to four feet, not, I'm not vouching for that one way or another, but I just wanted to make that known because he did make, make a point, I'm sure he would have made, brought that up today if it, if he was able to join, or, I don't know if he can hear us or not, but.
And that's located on page, what he's, what City Planner Feinstein is referencing is on page five, two B.
So one oh four C allows a one-foot encroachment?
It actually allows a two-foot encroachment into a required setback, but then has a very, has a strict minimum of a three-foot setback. So in this instance, you're already at four, you can only get to three, so it's a one-foot encroachment there.
So the notion being, and this, this was actually my issue all along, was the, this four-foot minimum, I mean, four-foot maximum for setback is, just seems really short in terms, for so many reasons, whether it be, you know, green space, or putting your trashcans out there, I mean, four feet just isn't that much.
Yeah.
Is that, was that an SB nine thing?
It is.
Oh.
It's an SB nine thing, it's an ADU ordinance as well.
Right, but the four feet is, not the encroachment.
Four feet, right.
We can, we can say four feet is the limit, period.
You can say no encroachment, yeah.
Yeah, you could say, if, if should be the decision of the commission, you can definitely say the projections as permitted by section thirty-three, one oh four C shall not apply to development pursuant to thirty-three dash one, one, five. That's just off the top of my head, though.
Well, if I was asking if we could increase the minimum size setbacks, then obviously I want it at least restricted to four feet.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement there. Yeah. So we will.
Staff can make that change.
I can, well, we understand the intent.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any other questions or discussion to be had on these before we take it to motion?
Did we, just so staff is clear, on item four A on page six, at least one new offering, we're just going to remove new, and at least one off-street parking shall be provided for each, for each uni, new unit constructed under this provision, correct? We're just removing the word new?
From a process standpoint, at this point, I think it would be who of us, if, if we can hear the written verbal oral comment, and then once the motion is made, then we can, as staff, we can make sure we know the specifics of it prior to it being voted out.
Okay, so I think then it's probably time to hear, hear the public comment read into the record. Thank you, Jessica.
So there's a public comment from Patricia Orchman that reads as follows. Dear Escondido Planning Commission Agenda Item G1 SB nine implementing ordinance, July twelve, twenty twenty-two, I call upon elected and appointed local officials in Escondido to exert local control and oppose SB nine because development under this implementing ordinance is expected to induce devastating permanent impacts that will cause irreparable harm to existing neighborhoods. SB nine applies inadequate and incompatible development standards necessary to protect and preserve the quality of life of existing single-family neighborhoods. SB nine allows four multi-story McMansions built within four feet of the property line where one home now stands. SB nine is a flawed bill, flawed bill that allows four full-sized homes without yards or garages, a radical upzoning of seven million single-family homes, and an unprecedented experiment in the U.S. This bill basically reflects overreach based on a disapproved, disapproved study that claimed California needed three point five million new units by twenty twenty-five. In fact, contrasting evidence proves we actually only need one point one million units, so the need is grossly exaggerated and the false urgency is distorted. SB nine was debated by the City of San Diego in December twenty twenty-one, as reported in the San Diego Union Tribune article, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, residents struggling with campaign terrain in San Diego granny flat construction. I'd like Escondido Planning Commissioners to consider a relevant public comment posted by L.M. Webb in response to this article, which illustrates the magnitude of actual impacts as told from a neighbor who suffered real impacts from construction of accessory dwelling units in the neighborhood, instead of merely imagining theoretical risks or the absence of risks. It is important for Escondido Planning Commission to understand the city has the authority to make adjustments to develop standards for accessory dwelling units, so I urge this item on planning commission work plan be suspended until more thorough analysis is completed and reconsidered later, since action on this item tonight is premature. If adoption is an immediate necessity, then please develop language to enable subsequent amendment process, so marginal benefits are not outweighed by actual outsized, outsized impacts from overly lenient ADU development standards and additional bonus provisions. Comment by L.W. Webb, once again, by calling these granny flats, the image brought to mind is, is a small cottage. What they are in actuality is mini dorms that now turn into small apartment complexes. Our infrastructure is not being upgraded to handle the new strains on, strains on sewage, but our rates went up threefold. Water or streets. No parking requirements cause crowded streets and no room for your own guests. These are not being built by homeowners trying to afford their own mortgage.
It'll go into the record in any case, correct? Yes?
Correct.
All right. So to consider a motion, I think we have essentially two, correct?
Yeah, and so as part of that motion, there's at least five internal references that are, that need to be cleaned up. So I think, I think I'd like staff to bring, to bring this back for a second reading, so to speak, that we put the changes that we talked about and those, and those editorial changes, and then we, and we get the chance to review it again.
There's support for that? Yes?
Staff's, staff's position would be that we believe that we can make the changes without having to bring it back here, however, if it's, if it is the commission's desire, that's, that you'd like to recommend it be continued with modifications to be made and returned, is your purview?
Okay, so that would be a motion unto itself.
So is that a motion, and now you're looking for a second?
Uh, no, actually.
Well, would you, would you like that to be two different motions? One motion to bring it back, and the other motion for what the changes are?
It would, if I can clarify, I think we would, we would be not, we would be, having the commission would be making a motion to continue or just continuing this to a future meeting with the direction to staff to update the language so that we can bring it back to you.
Okay.
Why don't you just go ahead?
Yeah, then, then I'd like to make that motion. We remove reference to a, a parking being adjacent and only have it on-site. We remove the reference that parking has to be new, and parking just has to be sufficient per, per the standard. And, and that was it. And, and we correct the, the at least five internal references, and then we bring that back for a second reading. That would be my motion.
Is there a second for that motion? Commissioner Barber, you second the motion?
Can we have discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I entertain discussion, please.
Yeah, and the only thing that, that, the only reason I wouldn't support it and make the second is just, I don't think we need to bring it back. I'm confident that staff can make the, the appropriate changes. I, I mean, it's just clarification sort of things. I'm supportive of the rest of the motion, though, just not bringing it back. So that's, that's the only discussion I wanted to have.
Not, not continuing the, the agenda item?
That's correct.
Then can we just include those other five changes?
Absolutely. The, the only part that I'm not in favor of, I guess, would be bringing it back, back to staff, I think, or bring it back to the commission. I think staff is capable of making those changes.
Okay, so what's the correct reference on page four, the first one?
So through the, through the chair and Commissioner, Vice Chair Paul, if I can, I can run through everything on here. So first thing on page two of eighteen, location, so D two A, we had the information that was already placed into the, into the record through the presentation that Principal Planner Nicholas made with regard to requiring the, to referencing that the use is as a primary use, so that was already presented. On page four, the reference in small I, B, towards the bottom, it is intended to be thirty-three, one fifteen, E, one, B, I. Okay? At the very top of page nine, I'm sorry, page five, it is thirty-three, fifteen, E, one, B, I, again. I did have a note that we were discussing prohibiting the projections into the side yard setback, that's two B on that same page, five. Is that something that you want?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we'll add that to the list of amendments or modifications here. I also had a note regarding at the bottom of that same page, maximum height stories to reference that if located within the rear or side yard, to add the word setback, so we can do that if that's what the council or commission would desire. We've looked at the issue with regard to parking, let's see.
Is, that's four A, right, right after?
On page six.
Four B, right?
Four A. It starts with the new.
Four A for the new and four B for the, for the location of it. So those are both on our radar there, we'll get that fixed. So four A, we'll remove the word new, and four B, we'll just put on the lot instead of, instead of adjacent to.
Correct.
On-site?
Yeah, I had, based on the discussion, the required parking shall be located on-site with the two-family dwelling the parking is associated with.
Say that again?
The required parking shall be located on-site with the two-family dwelling the parking is associated with.
Okay.
On-site was the word that everyone was using.
Moving on, on page nine.
Oh, we have seven, bottom of seven, nine meters. On page seven, number nine, just above little F, there was the rule that it's just the meter for the water, it's not meters.
Okay, right. Page nine, thirty-three, one fifteen, all right, I'm sorry, it's on D one, section thirty-three, one fifteen, D two, instead of C, going down to D four on that same page there, thirty-three, one fifteen, E, one, C, and in number five, right there as well, thirty-three, fif, one fifteen, F, seven, A, that reference. Moving on, page ten, lot size, and I'm sorry, setback, so two near the top, thirty-three, one fifteen, E, instead of C. I believe that is it.
All right. I'm sorry, Adam, could you go back to nine? I missed one of those, must have been D one, is that?
So D one has been, it's going to be changed to thirty-three, fifteen, D two, D two. Thank you.
So is this now the motion?
There you go.
Right, so that list of amendments is incorporated in.
That I will second. But I did want to clarify, I did, I don't know if I was having a negative tone to my voice when I was asking questions, just, just in case I did want to clarify, I completely support staff's work on this and the ordinance, it's, my problem isn't the ordinance, it's my problem is SB nine. And sometimes we vote for things that the state requires it to, that we have to hold our nose to vote, and this time I feel like I'm having a gun held to my head to vote in favor of it, but I will be supporting the staff report plus including the amendments.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, so that clarifies the motion. I think we're all okay with a roll call. Chair Barbe, approved with modifications. Commissioner Barber?
Approved with modifications. Approved with modifications.
Commissioner McCarroll?
Approved with modification.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes, approve.
Commissioner Spear, if you are there? Commissioner Wyler?
Yes, approve.
Okay, vote is five to zero to approve with modifications.
Thank you, Sean.
Great, thank you, Sean, that was great. Thank you. We have a request for a five-minute break, recess, to use the facilities?
Well, thank you all very much. I know that was a lot to get, it was certainly appreciable, the time and the votes. Well, good for you all to, to make it intelligent. Trump, he was. I will tell you, Adam, there's so much pride, Richard, and others, so I think really good to him, and just working with Owen and Dare, and coming on board and just, just yelling about, we're still looking at him, so, so, it's, it really was.
Okay, I guess we're ready to reconvene? I can tell that. All right, thank you for everyone's input and staff work on the, the ordinance. So now we move on to current business, which is the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Planning Commission Work Plan, which we have already looked at once and had a few recommendations, I believe, so I believe staff is going to present on the final, or?
Yeah, just real brief presentation, I wanted to let you know that there have been some modifications made from the prior version, mainly to address changes in priorities and in deadlines or timeframes based on where we've been between May tenth and today. They're very minor, there's nothing that's been omitted or removed from the plan, there's nothing that's been, you know, moved from the back of the list all the way to the top or anything like that. It's, for instance, the housing element work is going to likely be progressing faster than the business recovery ordinance. The omnibus is probably going to be progressing faster than the East Valley specifically. So little things like that, so, and, and then because of delays on certain issues, we've pushed back the, the anticipated timeframe on some of them as well. So those are the only changes that have been made to the, to the document at this point from, based on what we discussed last time, and staff would recommend that the commission review, discuss, and approve the, the work plan as presented now.
Great, thank you, Mr. Feinstein. So comments, questions, clarifications on the work plan that has now been updated a little bit? Commissioner Paul?
Yeah, so I just want to say, I, I think we talked about maybe not last meeting, but last year, about adding a Gantt chart for the visual to see the timeframe? Maybe you don't remember that, right? But anyway, I'd just like to suggest that, that, you know, I'm a real visual person, and it, it's really easy to see them laid out on a Gantt chart, the time schedule. But otherwise, I like, I love the document, you know that.
Other thoughts, comments? I just had one question about, I was curious about the, the climate action plan. I understand that, was the council deliberating on whether or not, how they would structure a climate commission or any of that?
I haven't heard any news on that in a little while, so yeah.
You have not? Okay, because I thought by, as I recall from one session I was in, there was, they said they would have some sort of response by the end of June. Here we are in July.
I, I haven't, I haven't heard anything.
Okay, so that's, it would be good to, to get some clarification on that at some point. I don't have any other comments on the work plan, is anyone else? No, all right, so I guess we can make a, we need to, we're not voting to approve this, correct?
All right, there is a resolution for approval.
There is, okay, so make a motion?
Motion for approval.
I'll second.
All right, roll call.
Chair Barbe?
Approved.
Commissioner Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarroll?
Approved.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes, approve.
Commissioner Spear? Commissioner Wyler?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero to approve.
All right, any other oral communications? I don't think so. Planning Commissioners, any comments, agenda, items for the agenda? I think at one point I saw, I'm not sure if that was from you, Commissioner Wyler, about changing the time of the meeting, was that it?
Yeah, I had mentioned that, that I'd like to put that on the agenda, or from our last, I think it was May meeting, it looks like it, you know, didn't get on the agenda. So I'm assuming that we'll have this discussion, but it's got to be on the agenda.
Right.
So I'm just reiterating, I'd like to see that on the agenda. Whether it's the next one, you know, it almost seems like it's kind of time permitting sort of thing, so if it's a heavy agenda, I understand if we don't have that discussion, but if we could get it, you know, sooner rather than later, put it that way.
Sooner, like changing six o'clock, or sooner than? No, just kidding.
Well, I guess we'll have that discussion.
No, 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 that was a joke, thank you, Commissioner Barber. So we actually, that is on our radar, we, we've started looking at not specifically that, but we're going to be bringing to the next meeting discussion of our planning commission bylaws, so that is where that kind of thing would fit in, but that's something that's been on our discussion internally, and that's one of the items that we're going to be agendizing for two weeks from now.
Okay, terrific.
All right, any other comments?
I have, I just wanted to ask a question. Could this possibly be a code enforcement issue, or could it be?
Commissioner Barber, could you speak into the?
I'm sorry, yeah, I have a bad habit of this, you ought to train me better. Is this a code enforcement issue, or it's not, could it be, but can we prohibit residents from putting up huge banners with obscene vulgarity on it? Which is happening at a home right now, which is right midway, is children walk to Rose Elementary School one direction, or to Mission Level School the other direction?
So I actually have a photo of it on my phone.
You know exactly which banner I'm talking about?
Yes. It has our attention, there are, is a code enforcement case.
Thank you.
They have modified somewhat, however, there are limitations. Constitutional law does, you know, allow people to be rude and obnoxious, and some things that we would like to see, it's not going to happen. So our hands are limited to make it nice and.
Pretty, okay. Thank you.
I don't want to use the terms, right? Because it's, it's not proper in this form, but.
Right, okay.
You're allowed to be rude and nasty in a public place. They can come in here and swear all day long, and we just get to smile and say, thank you. A good rule of thumb is, the remedy for that speech is more good speech.
A polite banner on the opposite side of the street.
That would help.
All right, I just do want to acknowledge that, welcome to Dare, to the, to the group. I believe you'll be sitting, you'll be basically our legal support going forward, so a warm welcome to you, and also thank you for attending that training that we all, about four of us attended, so it was really good, and I think we all benefited from it, so that was great. I think, there was one thing I learned during that training from a planning commissioner from Encinitas, and that was that once the agenda and all the packet materials are issued, that each of the planning commissioners is entitled to a thirty-minute, maybe this could be part of the bylaw discussion, thirty-minute phone call with someone on the planning, in the planning department, or whoever's responsible for those agenda items. And I thought that was just a really, just to have the option to do that, if there are things that, you know, questions which, which would also increase efficiency of the meetings that we don't have to be asking a lot of these questions if they're satisfied. So that was just one thought that I had.
Yeah, and I think that as a process item, I think I, I'm at liberty to discuss that, even though it's not an agendized thing here. We regularly accept and are eager to talk to you guys on items on our agenda. I know I spoke to Commissioner Spear extensively today, I know that we communicated via email, Commissioner Paul, and on other items, through the years, we've always done that. While it's not necessarily in our bylaws or anything, I, I think that it's just something that we're, we're more than willing to do and open to, so if you ever need anything between agenda publication and the meeting, by all means, reach out to myself or whoever the project planner is, and they'd be happy to discuss with you.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, to mention that, that's fine with me too, because I feel perfectly comfortable picking up the phone or emailing anytime. I just wanted to mention that particularly for our new, new commissioners, that it's, that, that was actually sort of an interesting protocol that they have there. But I'm okay with not, not doing it so formally, but I just thought, I thought I'd put it out there. Okay, any other thoughts? Director's report, I was going to go there.
Sure, so as the city planner, I'm not the director, and I did want to announce that we did hire a new community development director, well, we're the Development Services Department now, the planning slash building, which was the Community Development Department, and the Engineering Services Department merged into the Development Services Department. And we have a new Director of Development Services starting in two weeks from yesterday. His name is Andrew Firestein, so that's going to be really fun for my email and his email and the like, but, yes, so he should, he'll be starting, I don't know that he'll be in attendance at our next meeting, but I'm sure you'll meet him in the near, near future, so we're excited to have that to help.
New org chart somewhere that we could?
It's, it's in the works, it's.
Okay.
I, the last one I had was from March, March of this year, I haven't seen the updated one.
Amazing how quickly they change. All right, thank you, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I will consider this meeting adjourned.